Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. We just had a wonderful reception prior to tonight's meeting on which we honored and recognized a number of our retiring teachers, administrators, custodians, food service professionals, paraprofessionals, also our volunteers, and we had a recognition ceremony for our night school graduates and our alternative high school graduates. It was an outstanding job, and thank you, Dr. Levine and Kara Murtagh, for your work. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, as well as being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent allowable by law. I'd like to first start, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. And now I'm going to turn the microphone over to our superintendent, who's going to be making introductions of two of our city's best that are here today for a presentation. And I think we have some very tough questions for them. Is that true? I think that's true. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to introduce Sidney O'Donnell and Colby Brown, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then stay up in front of us to do a little presentation on Project 351 and their involvement in 351, and maybe the school committee may have some questions for them. Indeed, they are two of our best. They are superstars at the middle school, and they have been all the way through, and we look forward to tremendous things from them at the high school as well. Todd Busey, Principal of the Higgins Middle School, was pleased to announce the selection of Sidney O'Donnell and Colby Brown to the role of PBD's Project 351 ambassadors for the year 2017. Project 351 celebrates the ethic of service and youth leadership by bringing together eighth graders from across the state, educators, service organizations, and private sector partners with the goal of transforming communities and uniting the Commonwealth through a shared purpose. Both Sidney and Colby were selected for their exemplary ethic of service and the values of kindness, compassion, humility, and generosity of spirit, all hallmarks of Project 351, and they demonstrate that on a daily basis. As peer mentors, members of the Student Advisory Board, and candidates for the National Junior Honor Society, Sidney and Colby serve as role models for all students. Both Sidney and Colby have been instrumental in helping to establish initiatives that will benefit the entire Higgins community. As Project 351 ambassadors, Sidney and Colby will participate in a launch day event in Boston, and throughout the year-long ambassadorship, will engage with other eighth graders and strive to make positive change through service and civic engagement, such as their citywide clothing drive in conjunction with Cradles to Crayons. I think we already did the citywhites, and it was, again, one of the biggest and most well-done in the entire region. Past PBD, 351 ambassadors include Cassidy Butt in 2016, Colby Therrien in 2016, Michael Tansey in 2015, Jack Woods in 2015, Jacob Guston 2014, Ava Marotta in 2014, Matthew Damato in 2013, Katie Wallace in 2013, and Belachula in 2012. It's my pleasure to introduce Sidney O'Donnell and Colby Brown. Please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Push the microphones close so that people can hear you. Sidney, Colby, again, welcome. It's great to have you here. And my understanding was that it was the top in the state, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so let's just say it wasn't one of, Dr. Levine, it was the top, the best in the state.
My one mistake this year.
So, can we turn it over to you two, and whoever wants to begin, and tell us a little bit about the work you've been doing?
I'll start. So, in August, we found out we were going to be this year's Project 351 ambassadors, and right away, like, I know we were both, like, honored to be able to have all these opportunities this year. So, in the winter, we hosted our annual Haven from Hunger food drive, where we collected a lot of, like, canned and other, like, items for Haven from Hunger in PBD, and we donated all those items there for them. And it was around, like, holidays, and, like, so we helped out a lot of people there. And then this April, we hosted our Project 351 clothing drive, and we received 1,356 bags of clothes just in the city of PBD, and it really, like, showed how a community can come together for such a great cause, such as Project 351.
The clothing drive, it helped, what, like, 3,000 people? But that's, like, that's insane, so, like, that's a lot of people, and it was just really good that we could help as many people as we did.
So, in January, we went to launch day, where we met all the other Project 351 ambassadors, and we got to, like, talk with them, and it's really great to, like, see how there's a bunch of other kids your age in Massachusetts who have, like, the same morals as you and are, like, all, like, doing the same thing to, like, help the community. So, we got to meet them, and we got to, like, interact with them and learn a lot about their communities and, like, what they were doing. And then we also did service, so I went to Greater Boston Food Bank, and I sorted food and, like, made packages there.
I went to the State House, and we also made packages, like, care kits, deodorant, stuff like that, and we bagged clothes, so we helped a ton.
And we got to do this with other ambassadors, too, so we got to get to know them, and we got to, like, work together with them, which was really great. And then this past May, we went to Gillette Stadium, where we got to meet again all these ambassadors, and this was after the clothing drive, spring service, so we talked a lot about, like, each community's clothing drive and, like, what they did for clothes and, like, challenges and different things there. So, we got to learn about how a lot of other people, like, lead, and we learned about different kinds of leaders.
Again, at the reunion, we helped a ton of kids there, too. We, uh, it was with the fruit we did.
Yes.
Clothes, there was the, um, the rocks for the veterans. There was a ton of stuff that really, uh, people benefited from that.
And also at reunion, it was, like, all past ambassadors, too, so we got to, like, work with a bunch of older students from PBD who were, like, past ambassadors, and we got to, like, lead with them, too, which was great, 'cause, like, they always set an example for us, so we got to, like, learn from them there. And we also learned about, like, different types of leadership, like, what type of leader you are, so we get to, like, so how to make yourself a better leader and, like, what you're doing to help others, and we got to, like, learn a lot about ourselves. And, like, by meeting other people, too, like, you're really inspired, like, a lot of people, like, shared their stories and, like, what it means to them to be an ambassador, and, like, means a lot.
Excellent. That's terrific. No, that's terrific. Now, it's quite an honor to have been selected as the ambassadors, the 351 ambassadors, and you should be very proud of yourselves. I know your parents that are here and very active in your lives are very proud of you as well. It's a tremendous honor, and you guys did an outstanding job. I just wanted, I wanted to ask one question, just something we've worked extremely hard on for a number of years now here in the school committee, our school administrators, was to build this new middle school, and it's something we're very proud of, something that took a lot of hard work, and I know it's going to be benefiting thousands of students in the years ahead, but you guys had the couple of years at the old middle school, so maybe you can each talk a little bit about what it was like going from the older school now to have this year in this new school with the technology and the science labs and everything that we worked hard to make sure was a part of the school. Maybe you could talk a little bit about your experiences here this year.
Um, yeah, you can go. Go ahead.
All right. Um, so, the experience here was actually, it was, it was really good, 'cause it's, like, it's a huge change, and, um, with all the Chromebooks and all the technology, it actually really helps, and, um, you do a lot with the technologies. It's like, it's like a college in here. It's awesome.
Um, I think that, like, the Chromebooks, like, and all, like, the technology in the school, like, helped us, like, advertise and, like, show other people about, like, what we were doing, 'cause we have, like, display boards, like, right when you walk in, and, like, we would always have messages about, like, Project 351 and, like, the clothing drive and the food drive, and it's, like, it's like a great way to, like, use the technology to, like, show other students, like, what we were doing, and we get to, like, they get to see, too, like, the progress we're making and stuff. So, it's, like, more like visuals, and, like, people can, like, see, and also, like, we make announcements all the time about, like, the clothing drive and, like, how far, like, and how much our school has done this year, and I think it's, like, really good to kids to know that they're, like, making a difference, especially in, like, this whole, like, new setting, a whole new environment. It's kind of, like, a new start, so I feel like a lot of people were really inspired this year.
That's terrific to hear. Thank you. Any questions from the committee members? Mr. Hockman?
Just quickly, congratulations to both of you. You represent yourselves, your families, and the city very, very well. Dr. Levine read off a list of your predecessors in this Project 351 that I think Governor Patrick started back in 2010 or 11, and wow, I don't know what other communities are sending as ambassadors, but that's a Hall of Fame list. I mean, there are kids that are, that were listed there who were student athletes, George PBD Award Medal winners, some real talent who were on to college and doing some great things, so this is just a beginning for the two of you. We expect you're going to continue in that, in that vein. I will say, I do know Colby a little bit better through baseball. He plays Babe Ruth, and he umpires over at PBD Little League, and when donations started for clothing and for funds and things like that, he was shaking down my managers, he was pulling clothes off of kids. I'm just joking. You guys are doing a great job, and keep it up.
And I did want to mention, you know, I know there are millions watching us right now on TV, and the poise that you two have, knowing that you're in front of millions is pretty impressive. But I did want to mention, a couple weeks ago at Memorial Day, Colby was away at a baseball tournament. I know he would have been there and did a terrific job. Sidney was at, was present at the Memorial Day parade. She read the Governor's Proclamation of Memorial Day in front of a tremendous crowd. It was kind of a rainy, difficult day, but it was terrific in the spirit of everybody, and Sidney did an outstanding job reading the proclamation, and it was just an excellent addition to the event, but she read as a Project 351 ambassador, so it was an excellent job. Anybody else like to, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whoops. Thank you, and thank you both for coming tonight and telling us all the work that you've done for the year. My question is, is it a tradition with Project 351? Will Higgins next year also do a clothing drive?
Yes, so every year, the ambassadors and Mr. Busey, like, help pick two new Project 351 ambassadors to, like, continue doing, like, all the service we're doing, 'cause we really want to, like, keep PBD involved and, like, just make the community even better, and, like, each year, we try to, like, reach our goal again and, like, try to help more people. So, yes, so this summer, we will, we will be selecting, like, two more ambassadors who will be going into eighth grade to, like, to continue on, and they'll be going to launch day and reunion and doing the food drive and the clothing drive as well, and they can, like, learn from, like, our experiences, and they can, like, do new things, too, and, like, try different things, but yes.
Very good. Well, you've set some high bars on those, so whoever comes in is going to have a real big job ahead of them to top, you're number one in the state, right, for, for the clothing drive. That's really, that's a lot of work, and you did a fine job.
Yeah, 351 cities and towns, and they, they were able to make us number one. It's terrific.
Yeah, that's huge.
Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to both of you. And as Mr. Hockman said, I know a few of the kids that have already had this honor, and they've gone on and stayed involved, and I know both of you had mentioned that you have mentors that were in Project 351 that come back and help. Are you planning on doing that as well when you go off to high school?
Yeah, I definitely am. I'm going to Bishop Fenwick, so that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go there, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna help there, too, so, I mean, I kind of wanted to come to PBD High, but I can still help just as much at Bishop Fenwick, and so.
Yes, you can.
Perfect.
Great.
Me, too. I definitely want to, like, continue on, like, doing Project 351. The last year ambassador, Cassidy, she's, like, one of my best friends now, and, like, she's, like, a great role model, and, like, she teaches me, like, a lot of things, like, about Project 351 and stuff, and she, like, really inspires me, too, so I want to, like, be able to do that to the new ambassadors, too, and, like, show them the way and, like, help them with whatever they need help with next year.
Excellent. Well, congratulations. Stay involved in the community. Your involvement means a lot, not only to the people that you're helping, but to future generations looking up to you, so well done.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations to both of you, Colby and Sidney, outstanding. Dr. Levine, you want to?
Just one point. When I was in high school in the early 60s, and I don't think anybody around this table was in high school in the early 60s, I was thinking about a lot of things, but volunteerism wasn't one of them, until John F. Kennedy, President Kennedy, began the Peace Corps and started to talk about the importance of giving back. Of course, the Peace Corps was international, but when leaders say it's important, it becomes important. And as you go on to the high school out of Fenwick, by the way, if I knew you were going to Fenwick, I would have disconnected your microphone. For those of you who are leaders, like you are, regardless of where you are, whether it be Fenwick or the high school, the city of PBD, or wherever you go off to college, or your career, when you're leaders, you do have a responsibility, and your responsibility is to make sure that other people know how important this is. That's the way we pass the torch, so thank you for everything that you do. You're great kids.
Thank you.
I kind of want to just end the meeting now.
Yeah. It's on a good note.
Yeah, just end the meeting on a good note. Okay, so let's go to approval of minutes. We have a number of meetings, budget meetings that we had, and, again, I want to thank all of the committee members for their hard work. We had numerous budget meetings, many, many hours were put reviewing the line items, seeking counsel from others, getting opinions, really just outstanding work. Always difficult to make tough decisions, but I think we did an outstanding job, and I want to congratulate all of you for the many, many hours, long meetings, long nights that we put into this, and we did the best we could, and I'm very proud to serve with all of you on the school committee, so I did want to say that. But we do have a number of budget meeting minutes to approve tonight. I'm gonna open that up.
Make a motion to approve budget meetings for May 9th, May 16th, May 17th, May 23rd. So moved.
Second.
Second. You've heard the motion for approval of the May 9th, 16th, 17th, and 23rd budget meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the minutes, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I just wonder, because with the budget minutes, budget meeting minutes, there's reference to above the line and below the line, and some of the documents that we had, and I don't know if historically we append those to the minutes. The minutes don't make much sense without those documents, so I would ask that we at least append those documents to the minutes.
Okay. That makes, that makes sense to me. Mrs. Dunn?
Just as a point of information, I think that they, they actually should be, because we receive those documents, so it really should be a complete, a complete package for anybody who's looking at them.
Great.
I had one other, one correction on May 16th, very bottom line, received chapter 70, which should be chapter 70. Just a small correction.
May 16th minutes?
On page three.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dunn, can you repeat that, please?
On the very bottom line of page three of the May 16th minutes, it should be chapter 70.
Great. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve May 23rd's regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol for approval of the May 23rd, 2017, regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
And lastly, make a motion to approve minutes for the June 6th public hearing. So moved.
Second. Thank you. Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol for approval of the June 6th, 2017, public hearing on the budget meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item will be approval of bills. We have two warrants. Mrs. Cappender?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3471, dated June 13th, 2017, in the amount of $176,398.57, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. Heard the motion by Mrs. Cappender for approval of warrant A, number 3471, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3473, dated June 13th, 2017, in the amount of $898,946.55, subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Cappender for approval of warrant B, number 3473, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Cappender. Next item is continued business. Mrs. Dunn, any update that you want to share on the MSBA Higgins project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We will be having our monthly meeting Thursday of this week, Thursday, the 15th, at 4:00 PM, here at the Higgins, and we will be discussing an update from the OPM and from the architects. We'll talk about the traffic pattern, the progress of the seeding of the fields, and one thing that is going on, a base coat of hot top is being placed on the roads, so people are going to be able to really visibly see that, and unfortunately, through the whole project, we were so lucky with weather, and the luck ran out when we had all the rain. It did hold things up, but they're working hard to get back on schedule. It's only held things up for a couple of weeks, but they had hoped to be a bit further along, and, well, sometimes things are out of our hands, so they're working diligently to get everything done and back on schedule.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
At least it wasn't snow.
Yes. I agree.
So, that meeting is public.
Great. Yes, and it was close. All right, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item, Dr. Levine, any update for kids only, before or after school program that you wanted to share?
All good, and we're getting ready for the summer program.
On the topic, Mr. Rosignol?
We still need to have an executive session regarding a proposal that they have for expanding their...
Their 21st century grant?
Thank you.
Through the Chair, are you asking about the Welch? The extension?
The center school, I believe.
Oh, okay, okay.
They want to extend to the central schools.
Thank you.
Before the next meeting?
We need to set that up before the next meeting. Great. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? The microphone is open. Next item is superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn that over to, I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Charette for a few comments about the new program that he has initiated, human resource. Charlie here? Charlie?
Thank you, Dr. Levine and Mr. Mayor. In your packet at the beginning of the superintendent's report is something that looks like this, as people's administration, and if you would just turn to that, we're just going to really go through it together as a group. As the mayor talked about earlier, when the students were here doing their presentation, remarking on the quality of this new school and what it really brings to the district, well, just as you update the quality of your schools, you also have to update the quality of their procedures within the school district, and naturally what this is intended to do. Quite frankly, and this is typical of most school districts, coming into the HR department last year, if you were to come to the HR department and you had not been in the HR department for 40 years, it would still have looked familiar to you. The only thing that would have been new would be maybe better computer equipment and that sort of stuff, but in terms of the procedural things, a paper-driven kind of process, that's really what the HR department is like. So anyhow, this year, we decided, after having an opportunity to deal with, you know, typical things, we, like, last year, a lot of compliance issues, looking at the different procedures that were placed and that sort of thing, I decided that with the support of Dr. Levine, that we would begin to look at new ways of doing things in HR, and one of those things is bringing on board a completely digital process for hiring, for recruiting, for hiring, for interviewing, for bringing people on board, and also for record-keeping within the department. And that's where we are right now. We're at the very, very beginning of the process, but I reported this to you, I think it was November, and I promised I'd come back to the committee and share with you an update of where we are, and that's why I'm here tonight. We looked at about, you know, just, we did a computer search, looked at 50-some-odd programs. The reality is, most of these programs are really based on, on, on commercial entities, not on governmental entities, not on education. We ended up looking at four education-driven programs. The two big ones out there are People's Administration, People's Administration, and, I don't know if you remember the name of the other one, but anyhow, Frontline, and they're the two big programs that are out there that do this work. We ended up focusing on, on People's Administration. One of the big reasons we did that was we were already working with SchoolSpring, and SchoolSpring is part and parcel, they're a, they're a, a, a small division of this People's Administration group. If you look at the, the first page in your, in your packet, you'll see that what we're doing is we're continuing to use SchoolSpring, but we brought on board a program called Talent Ed, Recruit and Hire. Now, what this program allows us to do, if you, if you're thinking in terms, okay, we have an opening, the first thing that happens is that the building principal needs to fill out a requisition online, then there's a workflow. It comes to me, then it'll go to Jared, then it'll go to Barbara McAthee. Barbara McAthee, at that point, will generate a posting online in SchoolSpring, and that the, the hiring process begins. What's powerful about this is that it goes well beyond SchoolSpring. Principals can not only post their positions, they can screen candidates by setting up criteria within, within the computer program, they can set up interviews electronically within the program, they can send out information to the candidate's references and get information back. So it's, it's timely, it, it moves the process along much more quickly, and it's very, very effective. Once the interview process is completed, the, and the candidate shows them, that again is all electronic, the, the search committee reports out, whether it's, you know, usually they, they will report out the candidate they, they want to hire, they'll send that through the, the workflow, and again, it comes to me first, then goes to Jared, then goes to Barbara, then goes to the superintendent, and then ends up, and ends up in, in the payroll office. Now, all of that was always happening, but it was folders and papers and, you know, and trying to keep track of that while you're able to do it. It's not a seamless way of doing business, so it really streamlines the process. Now, that's just the talent recruit and hire piece. The next piece, which I'm really excited about, is that we're going to be able to take all of our records, digitize those records, and when a person gets, now, from now on, when a person gets hired, all of that becomes part of the Talent Ed Records Program, which is the second feature of this, so that ultimately, now, we're not there yet, we, you know, we, we are at the very beginning stages of really learning how to implement this program, and there will be, I'll tell you, there'll be bumps along the road, and some people will be wondering, God, why did I talk to you? I want to go down this road. But anyhow, we, we will figure out all of, all of the issues that, that need to be dealt[1732.23] But anyhow, we will figure out all of the issues that need to be dealt with. But at the end of the day, where we want to be is we want to be in an almost paperless environment. Even to the point that if a teacher wants to request, for example, a personal day, they don't have to fill out a form, send it to their principal, who then sends it on to Dr. Levine, and all, they'll simply be able to go into their own account on the system and fill out that request and send it to us. Or they want to request permission to take a particular graduate course, that sort of thing. All, and think of anything a teacher might need to do right now in the system that is driven by paper, it will now be able to be done digitally. And that's going to be a very, very exciting piece. And it's going to, to fully implement the system, I would say, at the end of the day, will probably take a good two years to get all the bells and whistles and people comfortable with it. But at the end of the day, we're going to be at a much, much better place. Now, the reason we chose this system as opposed to Frontline, I already mentioned that the experience that we have with SchoolSpring. But the other piece, and it's the next piece of paper here, is just the level of staff development and customer support that they provide. They provide, you know, chat support, phone support, online support, and they also provided some onsite professional development that the other company did not provide. And the next page just simply talks to you about SchoolSpring, gives you a sense of how prevalent they are in the marketplace. We've already used the system for recruiting, and it's been very powerful, even, I know, even Dr. Levine, who is not a fan of computers all the time, has found the system pretty useful as we've begun our searches. And then the last two pages simply just show you, you know, what it's like for an applicant. You know, they'll click on "Apply for this Job," it brings you to our website, and that's what, if you were looking at job listings, when you go to the website, that's what it looks like on the very next page. And then, again, very seamless, I don't want to, you know, go on and on and on, but I am very excited about this program. And I really think, at the end of the day, it'll yield some real dividends to the PB Public Schools and get HR into the 21st century. And that's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Charette, and thank you for your service to the city of PBD over the last couple of years. You've been very valuable, and have really helped our city. We want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any questions about the program? Mr. Olympia?
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick questions. Will there be mobile apps to this program?
Mobile as in on your cellphone?
Yeah.
You know, that's a really good question. It's a question I never bothered to pursue with the company, because quite frankly, most of the work that we do is in our offices and that sort of thing. But that's a good question. We look interested to find out what the answer is to that.
Yeah, because I think that would be convenient for teachers and other personnel, that a lot of times, they're in the classroom, they're on the run type of thing, and it might be just easier to do that. So that would be great. Also, too, is it cloud-based? I mean, is the backup cloud-based?
Yes, it is cloud-based. And I've been remiss to not say this, and that is, I have, I can't emphasize enough, the amount of work that, you know, we talk about digitally, oh, piece of cake, really easy. The reality is, to get up to speed and ready to implement is not. Barbara McCarthy, who's a longtime HR person, has been working, you know, incredibly hard on this, great attention to detail, and we're really making tremendous strides in HR right now. And I'm really proud of where the bottom is right now compared to where we were in September of, oh, Mr. whatever it was, 2015, 2016, whatever. The time just keeps on flying. It doesn't seem like two years should have gone by this quickly, but it has. And it's been fun. But anyhow, any other questions?
And I'll just echo what the mayor just said. Thank you so much for your service the last few years. Really appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure and an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Thank you for helping us move into where we should be with the rest of the world, you know, getting away from all of the paper. My question is, you know, I know that you're leaving soon, retiring, and Mr. Farrell will be taking over. Do you have any idea, is he going to be the go-to person for this? Is he familiar with this system?
Yes. We have begun to do transition meetings. He knows that this is the, really, in many ways, the most important project for next year. This could, can really transform how we do business in HR, and he's aware of that and very excited about it, actually. And the nice thing is that he's been in the private sector, and in the private sector, they use these kind of systems all the time. He's familiar with what they use in the private sector, and I'm sure can bring over those skills into this program. So he's very excited about that. And I'll be working with him for the next couple of weeks that I have left. We've scheduled a day or two together to spend and just do some transitions.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Charette, thank you for dragging us into the age of technology. You have prodded and poked and pushed and dragged us into the future, and I appreciate it, because we used to have a reputation of still investing in carbon paper. So this is huge.
Well, you'd be glad to know, though, in this particular area, we're not alone. There are many districts that have not, not at this spot. And we've been working actually pretty closely with Framingham, that they are really a model district when it comes to implementing this program. And we've built a relationship with them, so I'm hoping that we can continue to profit from that as well.
It really is something that, it makes so much sense when you talk to people who are applying in other areas, like you were saying, in the private sector or any of the jobs that are out there now. Young people are definitely looking for jobs online and applying online, and this is a really big piece of finding real quality employees. So, thank you. It's, it is huge. And I know that when you set one of these systems up, it does have a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but once it goes, it's going to be very good. And it's also going to help us with the enormous amounts of storage of data that we have presently. This is going to help with one of those problems of running out of space to keep all of the records, so they'll all be kept online. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Charette. Thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Levine.
Thank you very much. And before I forget, I want to do a shout-out to Marge Macarelli, my secretary, who, actually, my administrative assistant, who organized the big party downstairs that we had, all the recognition. She did all the books, and she did all the gift bags, and made sure that I knew what I was talking about. So, thank you to Marge, who was always my right hand and does such a fabulous job on everything. She spent a lot of time on this. Second, just to go one step beyond what Dr. Charette said, if you remember in 2011, when I was here last, the HR department was a two, full-time, two-person office. You guys never replaced the person who retired, and Barbara McCarthy's been doing that job and just assumed those responsibilities. This will help her get through the very large amount of work that she does every day in the digital age. Will help her streamline her work, which is a good thing. So, I want to thank Barbara publicly for simply moving on with a, what was a two-person office, and it became a one-person office. She's done a tremendous amount of work and does it well and without complaint. So, thank you to Barbara as well. And lastly, you all know that Charlie is a dear friend, but he's more than that. And if you talk to any principal, and indeed, the unions and teachers, they will miss Charlie tremendously. The quality of human being that Charlie is, that he brought to this district in so many different ways, really can't be described here tonight adequately. But I think you all know that we got very lucky. We hit the jackpot. We hit the lottery when Charlie agreed to come back out of retirement for a couple of years and help us out. So, Charlie, I won't be saying goodbye, because I know that I'm going to see you in a whole variety of different ways, but from me to you personally, I can't thank you enough for coming onboard and helping me out. And just to give you an example of our relationship, today, we had a meeting, a management meeting. There were five of us that sit around a table and talk about a variety of different things. And I said, okay, so I'm going to speak to so-and-so about that. And Charlie said, no, you're not going to do that, Herb, I'm going to do that. There aren't very many people in the world that can say that to me, my wife being one, Charlie being another. It's very helpful to have somebody that has not only the courage to say what needs to be said at the table, but the talent. And the best thing that you can do as a leader is surround yourself with good people. And I certainly have been lucky enough to surround myself with good people all of my career that have made me look good, Charlie being right up there at the top of the list. So, thank you, Charlie. I would ask the school committee for a motion to approve the PBD High School track team's trip to Greensboro, North Carolina, June 15th to the 18th, to participate in a national competition.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a recommenda, we have a request for a waiver of fees for use of facilities for the July 4th event for Ward 2 from Councilor McGinn.
Make the motion to approve the waiver request, except, I know he's looking for $260 per our policy. That can only be $210, because we can't waive the $50 energy fee. So, I would make the motion to waive the usage fee for $210.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Rozignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. For discussion, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair of the committee, I would just like to go ahead, we could do the additional $50 as well for the energy fee. I'd like to get some input.
Okay. Mrs.?
Oh, I'll ask a question if you want me to.
No, no, Mr. Huckman, I'm sorry. Did you, I knew someone over there had their hand up. I couldn't, I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's not related to Mr. Amico's point, if anyone else wanted to talk on that before I, before I have a new point.
Good on you. I will ask. I couldn't hear what Mr. Amico said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see if we could go ahead and waive the additional $50 as well. I believe they work out of the, is it the Welch School for that? So I'd like to see if we could go ahead and, for the Ward 2, I know Mr. McGinn does an incredible job with Ward 2, and I'd like to go ahead and see if we can prove that.
Just, it's a point of information, because of, when we set up the energy fee, we made it non-wavable by the school committee. It was the one thing that we can't waive.
Okay. Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to, in reading through Mr. Councilor McGinn's material seeking this waiver, he points out the limited use that he's seeking at the Welch School, and under the collective bargaining agreement, we're obligated to have a custodian present. The waiver request actually talks about the volunteers that are actually going to be cleaning up, setting up the event outside of the school, cleaning up any of the debris that is a result of the event. But for the use of restrooms, really, we're opening a school, and pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement, that requires a custodian to be present. And that's fine, and that's fair, because that was a fairly negotiated bargaining agreement. I just want to go on record as saying that when the new negotiations open up, which should be this fall, I think, I think this is a point that we should take up. I understand if there's going to be some substantial use of a building, we should have a custodian or an administrator present. But now, we're, through Mr. Rozignol's motion, which is going to pass unanimously, and it should, because the residents of Ward 2 should get the benefit of the 4th of July stipend afforded to their councilor, so that they can celebrate the birth of this country. But it falls on to Mr. Stanton. It falls on to the rest of us when we just go through this process of a budget, where we're looking at, are we paying for books for libraries, or are we paying for, you know, are we going to have teachers or not? It comes somewhere. It's not just $210. The custodian or the staff member that's present is still getting paid. It's just that we're absorbing it as a school district, as opposed to the Ward 2 city counselor, who's trying to, I think, do a good thing in celebrating the birthday of this country and allowing his constituents to do that as well. So, I just want to bring it up as a point of maybe moving forward. It's something that, you know, I've listened to for eight years, I've come over to the other side. I used to oppose these motions routinely, because it's a tax on the school system, essentially. And maybe it's time we start talking about why we do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. All right. Motion's been made. All in favor? Any opposed? A unanimous vote? Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a series of donations that I would ask the school committee to approve. I will read them one by one. I'd like to thank Dave Gravel and Grabach Associates for donating a bunch of weight machines. I think there were eight of them, and they are, they are corporate quality. They are quite good machines, and Mr. Sheridan went over and looked at them and has retrieved them, and he's very excited about our, being able to use them.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? A unanimous vote?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An electric piano has been donated to the Carroll School from Mr. and Mrs. Smith of the Carroll School community.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol for approval, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Excuse me, Mr. Huckman. All in favor? It's a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Isidoro family has donated a microwave oven to the Carroll School Teachers Lounge.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
Thank you. Heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol to accept the donation from the Isidoro family, seconded by Mr. Huckman. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
$250 cash has been donated toward the Carroll School Enrichment Program Fund from the Damiri family.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol for approval, seconded by Mr. Huckman. All in favor? It's a vote?
And lastly, a color copier has been donated to Central Office from Northfield Properties.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol for approval, seconded by Mr. Huckman. On the motion, Mr. Rozignol?
As far as maintaining the color copier, does that now fall under our purview? Does that go under our license with, I'm assuming it's not the only copier we have in the district? So, do we just accept it, and then if it breaks down?
Point of information, it is. We still have a line for carbon paper that Ms. Dunn thought we got rid of.
Tradition.
I'm going to ask Jared to answer that question. I think that since it's donated outside of the contract, that we would be responsible for it.
Yes, but it's actually a printer. So it's not a copier. So, minimal.
Yep. Got it.
Lot of work.
All in favor? It's a vote?
A lot of work has gone into building the direct, new director of guidance and counseling job description.
Jared has a question.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Sorry. It really is, can we just also send letters of gratitude for all the donations?
Yes. A lot of work has gone into the building of the Director of Guidance and Counseling Job Description. You've had it in your packet. I would ask the school committee for a motion to accept. This has already been reviewed and approved by the Administrators Union.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Huckman, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question. When we had discussed this, there was talk of having this person have a small caseload at the high school. I couldn't find any line about that in the job description, other than the one, you know, anything else directed by the superintendent. But could we put something in that specifically?
Sure, I can add that. That is the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
There it is. Perform such other tasks and assume other responsibilities. But I think, so that when someone's applying, they'll get a very clear picture.
I'd amend my motion to reflect Ms. Dunn's request.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have the amended motion that's been made by Mr. Hodgman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hodgman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee. The paraprofessional performance evaluation came out of our discussions and negotiations with the paraprofessional union. The agreement was that there would be a subcommittee that would form a paraprofessional evaluation. A lot of work has gone into this. There have been three or four meetings back and forth at least, mostly through Charlie and the work that he's done on it. The final agreement a few weeks ago, and you have it in your packet, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Rosignol for approval. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hodgman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Written communication about those chosen by the PBD Health Collaborative for being champions for youth. There are many, many wonderful people on that list. My name must have been dropped somehow from the printer.
And finally.
I would like to point out on that list of people that our very own Ms. Carpenter is being recognized this year. So congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
I think there was one other person at the table that was on that list, too. The mayor, some congratulations.
Thank you.
We keep good company.
It's all right. I don't mind. The last issue under superintendent's report is the draft schedule of school committee meetings. I know that Mr. Hodgman has some additional concerns, so I'll just open that up to the school committee because this is your decisions.
Okay. I'll open up to you, Ms. Hodgman.
Yeah, Dr. Levine doesn't have the authority to recommend. No, I'm joking. I'm really joking. You know, so there were just really two concerns I had, and I joked with Dr. Levine when I raised them to him, hoping that he would handle them administratively. And he told me to deal with them with the committee. So now, I joked and said, I was going to ask for all the meetings to take place on the second Monday and the third Wednesday, so we can get away from these Tuesdays, but I won't do that. There are two dates in question. The December 26 meeting falls during our winter recess. Historically, we don't meet. We meet once in December, I believe, and I'd ask for that change. The other change I would ask for is the earlier meeting in December, December 12, happens to fall on the first night of Hanukkah. I'd ask if we could meet on the 11th, the Monday, or Wednesday, the 13th, or whatever other time that is convenient for the committee. As far as the July and August dates, I think that we can, my opinion is, and again, historically, we'll meet once a month as opposed to twice a month. I know we all have vacation plans and busy schedules. I know I talked to Mr. Rosignol specifically about this. We had an opportunity to talk about maybe an August one day for an August meeting, or maybe an August 29 day for an August meeting. The other parts of August seemed consumed, at least with our schedules. I don't know what anyone else's schedules are.
Any comments?
August 29 would be right before school starts. We do not start school till after Labor Day this year. August 1 might be a little too soon to deal with some stuff that occurs over the summer. So I ask that the August meeting be August 29 unless someone has an objection to that. And then maybe perhaps the July meeting be later in July so that we don't go more than 30 days or so. So maybe July 25.
Mr. Rosignol, did you want?
Yeah. Through the chair, to the committee, I think those dates are kind of perfect, actually. One meeting in July, basically, to kind of wrap up anything that we haven't gotten to as of now. And then the August 29 would be right before school starts. I think those two days are perfect for the subject.
Through the chair. I will be in Toronto on August 29, coming back on Wednesday for the things that we have to do to open school. But I won't be here to run that meeting, but I know that Ms. Mereteg will be able to do so.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that having the August meeting closer to the beginning of school is always very helpful because we get information in about, you know, the preparations and where we stand, and we'll really be able to get a lot of things, a lot of things done that night. And as far as July, I was thinking if we just did it perhaps in the middle of the month, like the third Tuesday in the middle of the month, or just so that we kind of shorten that timeframe between our last, our last meeting in June and then, you know, heading into August. I know there's a lot of work going on in the school department, July and August. That's when you get so many things ready for the school year. But if we had it kind of midway, it might shorten. I think it is the 18th, yeah, if that works.
Yeah.
Either that or the week after, whichever.
So if I can make it in the form of a motion?
Could you hold?
Nope.
Just, historically, what's going through my mind is that the later in July you have the meeting, the more information I will have for you regarding class sizes, teachers, all the things that happen in the month of July. They happen pretty rapidly from the middle to the end of that month. So it's fine with me. It makes no difference to me. But if you wait a little later in July, I'll be able to give you more information about what's been happening.
Through the chair, if the 25th would work better, because that would be a week later, that, I think that's a good point.
July 25, Mr. Amico?
On that point, I also think with the MSBA Statement of Interest on the table, maybe you ought to wait till the end of July.
That's another good point.
Maybe more information will come forward.
Yep, good point. July 25, August 29. All in favor of adding those dates in?
And then removing December 26 and changing December 12 to December 11 as Monday. I haven't seen the Patriot schedule. It might be a Monday night.
In December.
We can always change it again.
So moved.
You may hear from my wife, though.
And again, I won't be here that night if that's the case, but.
The motion's been made. Motion's been made with those additions. Mr. Hodgman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hodgman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. And one additional point. Just so that if we did need to have, for whatever reason, a second meeting in December, we would determine that later and put it, normally it is, you know, not on a vacation week. But if we ever had to have something, because there are things that we wrap up in December, and, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I am done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. We do have three written communications. One is the Summer Institute brochure from the MAS C. Two is the Office of the City Clerk notification of Community Preservation Act funds that were put forth towards the South School Playground, which, if you haven't seen yet, is outstanding. We are going to have a community meeting, and I believe, or a community presentation, a forum, to celebrate the community coming together to make that wonderful playground happen, July 26. We'll make sure everybody's notified plenty of time, but it will be a special moment for the city. And Community Preservation Committee was a part of that. And the third item is the Office of the City Clerk letter regarding the removing of the polling location at the Kylie Building. Any comments on those? We will go now to subcommittee reports. Education, any report or any update? Mr. Hodgman?
All of our kids are graduating, so we're doing something, but nothing to report on something.
Great, thank you. Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
School safety? Mr. Olympio?
Yeah, we will be, I'm going to try to schedule a meeting before the next time we meet on June 27.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosignol?
Nothing at this time.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time, but everyone would have received in the mail the list from MAS C with all of the policies that have been updated by MAS C. And the committee will end up working on that. I'm going to go through that, highlight any that are, need to be changed in our book, and then we'll be meeting and coming to you with that.
Thank you. City council and advisory boards, Mrs. Dunn, anything?
Yes, there will be a parent advisory board meeting, the last one of the school year, Monday, June 19, here at the Higgins, at 7:00 PM. And we'll be welcoming some new members. Some of the PTOs have their elections at the, in the spring. So there will be new parent advisory board members and some who have been wonderful, very, very active members of parent advisory board who are moving on and will be saying goodbye to them. But they think they're going far. They're not. We're going to keep them in the autumn.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and grounds, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Nothing at this point, but I'd like to schedule something for maybe July 25, a brief meeting regarding property upfront here at the Higgins, so we can work on something for that.
Good idea, yes. Special education parent advisory board, Mr. Olympio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met the Special Education Parent Advisory Board, we met on Wednesday, May 31, and Mr. Amico, Ms. Dunn attended, along with Ms. Grooby. And there was probably about 12 or 14 parents that showed up. It was received extremely well. That same night, there was a Higgins concert that I think there would have been more parents that would have showed up, quite frankly. And, you know, some of the issues, it was just a great positive meeting. Some of the issues were discussed, you know, there may be some website issues, communication with the Special Education Department. But it's, I think, going forward, I have a real good feeling about this subcommittee. I think once the fall starts, I think it's going to really pick up steam. And a lot of people have reached out to me, and I just want to thank, again, the school committee for their support, and Mr. Amico and Ms. Dunn being a great resource at the meeting. I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
It was, it was a very nice meeting, a wonderful group of people. To sit and talk with them and hear about their experiences and some of their suggestions. And I think, as John said, going forward, it's going to be a very, very good group to work with. And there's a lot of information there that we can work with them and make things a lot better for everyone.
Yeah. And on that, our next meeting's going to be actually June 20, Tuesday, at 7:00, and we're going to be meeting with CPAC. So it'll be a joint meeting.
Great, thank you for that update.
Yep.
Excellent. New business will be handled in the regular course. And items for the next agenda, we have our next meeting is on Tuesday, June 27. We do have the budget vote this Thursday evening, a budget hearing, and vote this Thursday, the 15th, at 6:30, I believe. Thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, to adjourn? Thank you.